The July 24th regular meeting of the Village Board. The time is now 6:33. You know, guys, who are setting the clock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustees Gray?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Horn?
Here.
Pearson?
Here.
Hopp?
Here.
Raiset?
Okay, at this point we... At this point we have open to the public agenda items only. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Come to the podium, give your name and address, please. Item D, can sign agenda. Understand a motion for approval of consent agenda, please.
Make that motion.
Okay. Any discussion here? Roll call, please.
Trustees Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Hopp?
Yes.
Raiset?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Communications Board.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a few items. Item F1 on your agenda is a request to purchase a public works vehicle in the form of an Ford F-50 with a dump box, snowplow, and all associated equipment. The total retail purchase price on this vehicle is $70,787. However, by purchasing it through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative, which is an arm extended to the villages that takes care of the bidding ahead of time, the village has produced some savings of $12,093, lowering our total purchase price for that vehicle to $58,694. This item is a budget expense under road and bridge. And at this time, if I may, I would like to defer to Superintendent Grisel just to explain what the package entails as far as the dump body and so forth, because you buy the truck and chassis separate from the dump body and ancillary equipment.
DJ.
Sure. We got on the state bid... I can do that. Discounts as a speech, by the way, just... We got on the state bid pricing and along with Monroe truck equipment, our fleet has typically been Western plows. And because we are changing thought and direction, instead of replacing dump beds all the time that are steel that rot out, we're going with a stainless dump body. And they've given me a discount being a new purchaser of this as a tryout. We know it's going to work, but we're going to try it out. We've never done it before. And along with that, they've given us a free Boss plow that kind of marries the dump body that we have along with the salt spreader that's going on it. So we saved $8,000 just on signing up with this Monroe Boss plow package. It's going to be a V plow, spreader plow, stainless to match the bed. And eventually, this truck will move out one of our older fleet, a '96 dump that was used for chipping in years past that the fenders were falling off of. We've just retasked that, repurposed that for part-time use for grass cutting and so on and so forth. But it will be replacing that one eventually out of the fleet. That's pretty much at its mileage and capacity. And we saved a lot of money going with Monroe this year as their exclusive Currys, exclusive installer, in the sense we're taking advantage of some rebates and things that they only do for one municipality a year, Boss does, or the municipality this year. We get signed up, I go to a four-hour seminar, we get a $6,000 free plow to try. After a year, if we don't like it, we can drop it in the lake and get a new plow. I'm sure we'll like it, so...
So, Mr. Mayor, with that being said, we're asking, first of all, a motion of approval to waive the bidding process, and second, a motion of approval to authorize the purchase as presented.
This new plow, yes, you say? It's a gift to the Village Board after that one year?
Correct, it's free. No, it's free. No money after a year will be incurred. It's a Western... Boss Plows wants to change the mind of all the typical Western plow users in the municipalities. They've targeted municipalities with their new re-engineered, restructured, more of a commercial fleet. And they pick one municipality a year to prove it to them that our plows are better in the hopes that in the future, when you start purchasing more equipment, you'll go with Boss. And it's a no obligation to repay free plow.
Does anybody like to make a motion to approve the expenditure? All right, I'm sorry. First, a motion to bypass bid.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Gray and Pearson. Understand a motion to allow for the purchase of this? I'm sorry.
Discussion on that.
Yeah, please.
Are we assured that any of the cheaper goes up the bids?
Historically, the answer to that would be yes, because this has gone through a bidding process already, okay? With Ford, Chevy, things of that nature.
And with the... Sales and purchasing cooperative, right? Well, it has been bated.
So we're actually getting a better price of the Coop than we could have even done on our own. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call on the motion to bypass the bid process.
Trustees Pearson?
Yes.
Hopp?
Yes.
Raiset?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Horn?
Yes.
Now, undertake a motion for the purchase of said vehicle with all the attachments for the amount specified.
So...
Second. Pearson, Raiset. Roll call, please.
Calling it trustees, Hopp?
Yes.
Raiset?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
And Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Item F2 on the agenda, my portion of the agenda, is you'll find attached a quote for total replacement of the Village Hall front doors. This quote includes all labor materials. We have requested a painted frame. It is inclusive of virtually everything that we need for the front. If you haven't noticed, the front doors of recent, they certainly in need of replacement. That quote is from the Boss Door Company. It includes locks and everything, as I stated, and as listed on the proposal. The amount of the proposal is $6,989 as total installed. Just for information, between Superintendent Grisel and myself, we did check some pricing just as to the type of framework and so forth, and found this to be very much in line. Additionally, this company has done work for the Village in the past. They're the ones that installed the man door in the Public Works Building directly behind this facility. So we would be asking for a motion and approval to authorize the purchase as presented.
So discussion?
Sure.
Is this something that... You said you did some due diligence on this. Is this something that has to go up the bid? Or are we bypassing the bid process or is it below the threshold?
It's below the threshold for bid, requirement for bid. Certainly, this board can mandate bidding on any item that you choose. But we did do a little cursory review, and it doesn't appear as though there is any room for huge savings. You might get $100 or so one way or the other. But based on the history that we've had with the company, this is our recommendation to the board.
Thank you. I'll move, Kelly. Accept this.
Second. Second. Board of... Any more discussion?
What makes you think that we couldn't on a bid have accepted the better? And you have to forgive me, because there are several pieces that we're missing on a package that we sort of power of the guy to clean down, so this is all...
Yep. First of all, the type of doorway that we're requesting, steel frame, the gauge of the frame, the installation, the paintwork that we've requested to be done so that we don't have to paint it here. The overall package price, if you take a look at everything that is listed in there, there's even things that are outside of a normal door company. They're providing cylinders that, like a Von Duperen exit device, and cylinders that are the Medco that are keyed to our current key system, master key system for the Village. That's one item. And as I said, I'm not going to guarantee that we couldn't save, you know, $100 or $200, but the time and effort put forth to request those bids, and we do have a very favorable track record with the current company. There's just not a lot of room for savings if you're going to quote that same type of same gauge material and things of that nature.
Question threshold for... I have two, too, basically.
And there is actually concrete work that needs to be done on the threshold because of the way the concrete was poured in front of the building. That's all inclusive in here. We don't want to have to, you know, modify anything.
Well, because it'd be a bit of a safe word. Excuse me, on this proposal, it states that the threshold may need additional building on it.
Right.
So that's uncertain at this point.
Well, it is. The reason we ask them to put that in there is because they couldn't tell without pulling the threshold out, but that's part of their bid. They will do that. They have made that inclusive.
The current door is steel or galvanized?
It's actually a steel skin door. If you take a look, it's rusting. Both doors are rusting at the bottom. If you are on the outside and it's all locked up, you pull on it, there's a lot of rattle because of the light gauge frame that it went into. You have dogs both that go into the floor and into the frame, and the light gauge frame has kind of wallowed out the hole, so you have some movement when you start pulling on those doors.
You know, I had a discussion earlier that somebody in thinking more about it. Maybe, maybe we should make the motion to have it go up the bid. $100, $200. If it's going to save us, we make the motion. If somebody can beat it, then they beat it. If they don't, so be it.
Would you like to...
So, yes, at this point, I would like to make the motion to put this up the bid. And I understand that the doors and public works, I've seen those doors, those are very nice doors, but it may need concrete work, it may not. Maybe somebody can save us $100. I would like to make that motion that it goes to bid. I'm sorry.
Can I ask for clarification? Do we want to set a timeframe on the response on that?
Sure.
So what you're asking is to table the initial...
Table it.
There's already a motion on the floor.
Right.
So what you're asking is to table that. There's already motion to approve this, so you're asking to table that for... How long? A month? I just need a clarification.
Right, no, I understand. There's a question, how long does it take to... I mean, is...
Well, here's the...
Is it...
And you're going to spend $100 or whatever for advertising, you're going to... I'm just trying to clarify this.
Right, right.
If this is the direction you want to go, there's going to be a cost of posting this unless you're merely just saying, hey, we want to get three estimates from three, or three proposals from three different companies, and just say, here's the specifications, we want all of this to be included. I mean, you're okay with the specs. You understand these are things that need to be done. So you're merely saying you want three vendors or something of that sort?
Right, I would like, yeah, at least three vendors to give us bids.
So let me ask for clarification. Mr. Administrator?
Yes.
Is it possible to submit a request for a response from three to five vendors to give us pricing based on all those criteria, and then ask them to have that to us by the next meeting? All they're doing is they're just giving a surprise at this point.
Yeah, next meeting. I don't, yeah, I wouldn't say by the next meeting. I don't believe a month is... A month is too long. I would say the next meeting.
All right. So just to clarify your motion, if I can backtrack here.
Right.
Your request ended to be tabled for the opportunity to, for the administrator or public works either wanting to reach out to three to five vendors, and they have until the next, well, two days prior to the next meeting, Monday, the whatever that would be, to submit their proposals.
Yes.
Is that a motion on that? I'll second. Any discussion? You want to take something else?
I don't believe I go... I don't point to things blindly. When I look at our public works supervisor and our administrator recommending this.
Sure.
And that carries weight for me. I'm not leaning towards the motion.
That's fine, and that's why we're here.
Right. I just wanted to say that.
Trustee Hopp, I understand what you're saying. I don't fault trustee Gray or trustee Pearson for leaning that direction.
I don't know.
And if anything, it'll just confirm that they've already done their diligence, and it probably will come back.
It'll cost them hours of time, too, which...
It's, and they're out and we're short many hours.
I know it. No one has anything to do there in the village.
Well, maybe...
We show a water pump in this village, too.
I'm sorry, trustee Hopp, did you say you wanted to be the one to reach out to the five vendors? I'm sorry.
The other thing that I am concerned about is that since this is the front door to the Village, I would imagine time would be of the essence of doing this. If we approve this proposal tonight, well, it says there's a lead time of five to six I guess I'm uncomfortable with leaving this if this door is in poor condition, having it not replaced, you know, spreading out the time for it to be replaced.
So the criteria you're looking for is to still meet that number?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We're saying according to the specs that was highlighted here, see if somebody can go there. All right. So on trustee Gray's motion, can I get a roll call on that, please? Motion to table until the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah.
Trustees Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn? Pearson?
Yes.
Hopp?
No.
Raiset?
All right. So the motion is tabled until the next meeting? Do you need a motion to rescind?
No, the motion to rescind the five.
Well, I think that was included as a part of the proposal. Is that...
Yeah, that's... Well, she was, yeah.
Right, okay. Just asking for clarification. I don't need to...
Yeah, it's all right.
Okay, so... The roll continues. The superintendent, who can...
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
No, that's all part of the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number three on my report is board action for a market study. At the last meeting, the board indicated information, requested information on the possibility of a market study for the Village. I was able to have some conversation and locate... There are hundreds and hundreds of companies out there. There is no way that I could address them all and come through. And the reason you don't have it in your packet is because it takes a while for these people to get back to you. But narrowing down, I was able to find a company that had presence in the Chicagoland area, San Francisco area, and Colorado, Denver, Colorado area. The reason I look for that, it provides some well-roundedness of a company, that they're able to work in different market conditions and be successful. Secondly, they did a project that had, with Romeoville, Illinois. I was able to have a personal reference over there. Carried, had a conversation of about 40 minutes or so with a gentleman in Romeoville, and gave high praises to the company of Bruin and Bruin and Associates. And had a 45-minute conversation with Aaron Bruin, who is the principal of that company. Sent some information. It's actually 23 pages long. I didn't copy all of it for the board members, but certainly it is available for review. I'd be happy to either have you review it or make your copies. I just didn't want to make them unnecessarily. And included in that, in the information of the firm profile and information that provides substantiates what they do and how they go about doing it, there was a provision in there for a letter of engagement that had a study scope of a kickoff meeting and subareas inspection, hypothesis formation, conduct interviews with public officials and staff, property owners, developers, real estate brokers, further assess strengths and weaknesses, and identify the market areas, supply competition, and market opportunities and constraints. Area number three was estimate potential demand or expenditure potential for retail space based upon analysis of demography and income makeup of relevant trade area households, and review of competing supply. And number four was estimate amount of on-the-ground space supported by potential retail demand. Compare relationship between demand and supply to identify relative intensity of competition for consumer expenditures, and likely scale and type of development opportunities. And number six is synthesize results and prepare a report for the board. They have included cost and hourly rate for duration, and based on their experience and the president understanding the situation for the work outlined above, they're suggesting a budget not to exceed $9,975 without any written approval. In other words, if they were going to go over that amount, they would need written approval from this board prior to doing so. I know that trustee Pearson had expressed extreme interest in that. I'm happy to partner up, share the information in much more depth. It's entirely up to the board whether or not they wish to authorize any expenditure at all, and if so, up to what amount. This is, you know, would be a baseline step, if you will, to help the Village understand where they are and potentially what direction they would like to take. And with that, I'll attempt to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions pertaining to... Most of that sounded like it was related to retail. I just want clarification on that. I know we're also interested in not just retail. Obviously, that's where you're going to try to draw your development. Will they also do studies pertaining to workforce readiness, if you will, and things of that sort, to identify? We're marketing ourselves to maybe industry and things of that sort. Is that something that this or another company would be able to participate in?
My understanding is this company has that ability.
Okay.
That was not, in our discussion, it did not come up as a baseline informational type of thing. Once we meet, the first initial thing here is, number one, was the kickoff meeting. That is where we could really understand what is beneficial to us from their point of view, and they can understand what we're looking for from our point of view. And if the study you're suggesting is part of it, absolutely, they would be able to provide that.
So the retail market study, primarily retail at this point, they don't just look at rooftops, but they're also going to look at the buying power that goes through and near our area that we could, that we could actually cause involvement to take place here as a result of people that drive past us to get to some of ours.
You are correct.
Just want to clarify, so everybody here says...
Yes.
I'd like to at this time, if I can, real quickly. There is a letter to the editor in Moni Monitor on July 18th, and it was pertaining to, it was stated it was pertaining to Peatone. But let me just read this for you. "In reference to the June 27th article of Peatone Retail Market Study under consideration, why would the Village pay to have a study of what types of retail and restaurant business would be suited to the Peatone area?" I don't know what Peatone's doing, but I just want to, there's, sometimes this is a response we get from the public pertaining to a market study like this. And then you go, why not just ask your residents for feedback? You know, don't they know what we want? But we're trying to market ourselves, and without getting into the rest of it, we're trying to market ourselves as more than just a Moni business center, but a development potential for establishments that want to come here from the, draw people that might have gone to Peatone, might have gone to Manteno, might have gone to Mattson, things of that sort, Frankfurt, whatever. We're not trying to compete with our neighbors, but we are trying to position ourselves as being a force we recognize, but we have to have the data necessary to communicate ourselves as something more than 2,000 rooftops. So, I mean, that's kind of a response to what may have been a misinterpretation of Peatones, but I just want to make sure everybody's aware of, there's a question there.
Mr. Mayor, part of that is that they only mention restaurants and retail, you know...
And I don't know what Peatone was doing, but I'm just saying it...
Up north, that are...
Right.
And that's, you know, very narrow scope of what they look at in market study. And that's why it's important that it is detailed with finding out what industry it has to look, because we do have industrial...
Absolutely.
...part of this to, you know, create new jobs in here.
Yeah. And they may, hopefully, they may also be able to sell some trends that have been experienced in neighboring, I don't know if they can alert us of that. Trustee Pearson, I know you brought to my attention one of our neighboring towns is threatening to impose a employee head tax. So for every business that's prospering, they're going to, they're talking about adding a tax per employee. You know, if we find out through these market studies of this, another thing we can help, they can help us identify. It helps position us as being more economically inviting to businesses that realize that we're not out to enhance their growth. I'm sorry.
And I'd just like to add on, too, and I think what Administrator Wallace had referred to, too, and maybe not a lot of folks understand market study, and it just pretty much confirms that it certainly is not just about commerce and retail. Of course, we want to position ourselves to get people to come here, want to come here, but that also it had, he had said something about the demography, and the demography has to do with the people living here as well. So we had talked about, you know, very, you know, several months ago, a couple of months ago, even holding, you know, this kickoff meeting, perhaps having a public forum, or invited to say, what do you need? What do you want from us here? And this is something all that can be included in a market study. The study certainly doesn't mean all about business. It's all about us. So we just want to position all of us.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, with that in mind, one of the other strengths of this company, and I don't know them from Man in the Moon, but they not only do retail, you know, commercial, industrial, they do large developments, they do small developments, they do communal developments, housing and retail. So you have built-in customer base. And one thing that I indicated to Aaron Bruin was that Moni is virtually a blank canvas that we can, you know, direct this community virtually in any direction that we want to at this point. And it's a good position to be in, and, you know, who knows, maybe at some part in our community, or future growth of the community, ends up being a retail, you know, multifamily housing type of thing where you have built-in customers. You see that going on a lot more and a lot more as time goes on. My point being is they're very diverse, and that's the opportunity that we have with them.
Any more discussion? No more questions that all pertaining to that? Trustee Gray?
I have one. I'm sorry to do this, but for the folks out there, is there anybody, raise your hands, that happy that you have to go out of town to go grocery shopping? Okay. Show of hands, would we love a grocery store in this town? We have been working on that, and we are still working on that. That is the number one thing we need to get this town to. So if somebody can walk into this town, and we're going to pay $9,000 for them to say, we need this, we need that, for 14 years, that is our goal. We have been working on that, we're still working on that. We do not need to spend $9,000 for somebody to tell me to, we need a grocery store.
Trustee Gray?
I'm sorry, but I couldn't hold it long anymore.
And that's, that's a, I understand your position on that. The problem is, when you talk to developers...
I get it.
They don't take our opinion as... They don't take our opinion as any credibility.
They look at how many people live in this town.
And they look at, they look at the buying power of those people that drive past us to get to where they're going. And you can say, "Hey, there's 5,000 people in this town, we can also even want a grocery store." No question about it. We all want a grocery store. But that doesn't influence the people that have to put down their hard earned, their investments to, to put a business here. You have to have the right credibility to bring this up to them in order for them to believe that it's something other than a pipe dream. We can say we want all sorts of things, but that doesn't mean we deserve it according to the developer's investment perspective.
My world's been a pleasure 14 years.
That's part of the problem, trustee Gray, is that without something, you know, business, when they look at numbers, they, they want to see it in black and white. We can walk in, we've been at the grocery store for 14 years for a reason, because we didn't walk in with hard factual data. Business is not going to break ground, and it doesn't matter what grocery store chain you go to, they're not going to break ground.
I've had this conversation.
Without that, without that data.
And I'll, I'll go a little bit further. One of our neighbors to the north is going to land one of the deals we wished we had. And, and I'm going to tell you right now, the difference between them and us, other than the population density, is the fact that they routinely, I mean consistently, put themselves in a place where they have their market studies done, and they're also in the places, whether they go to Vegas, or Chicago, or wherever else, they're going to where these conferences are at, where the developers are meeting, they're interacting. We don't do that. We haven't had a market study done for this town since Larry got here. I'm just saying, you know, and, and we have gotten what we've gotten by accident. Calvers coming to town because they happen to be driving through the town, they go, "You know what? This might be a good place to put a, a restaurant." You know, it's not because anybody here deliberately knocked on their door and brought them here. They just happen to be driving through on their way to Bourbon Acre Creek. So if you want to grow this town, and you want to have economic potential here, you've got to have credibility. Now, this is a development opportunity where frankly, the cost of this can be underwritten by TIF funds, because it has to do with our tax incentives and funding and all that kind of stuff. I understand your objection. You're entitled to your opinion, we're all, we're all entitled to that opinion, we can all state it. I'm, I'm glad you feel comfortable with seeing it, I'm grateful for that. But I'm going to tell you right now, from my opinion, and it's up to you guys to vote on it, but in my opinion, whether it be this or twice that, it's relevant to help us get businesses here, for retail businesses for one, to, to, to put the kind of businesses here you're looking for, whether you're talking about a modern pod grocery store like Chester's that used to be here at Town Meeting years ago, or, or is all, is the best we deserve is a 7-Eleven with a convenience store, or do we go all out and get a big box? You know, we've tried for the big box, but we lost that to our neighbors to the north. They're not coming to Moni.
We tried for the Walmart.
Well, they're going, they're going to Rich Park. So we lost it.
I get it, I understand it, I get it.
And it's because we haven't gone to the dance. We haven't brought the right information, we haven't dressed the park, and we haven't gone to the dance. You want it, you want to get these opportunities, we can't just reach out to people we think we know, we got to reach out to people that have the network themselves. That's the difference, and sometimes, and, and sometimes it comes down to be it the engineering firm you use, the legal counsel you use, different things like that. I know I've talked to Larry, and he's been reaching out to people that he's had networks with as well, in different development. And Mr. Wallace as well. You know, it's taking care of the businesses we have in town, because frankly, a lot of those have development ties as well. So it's when you're taking care of your businesses, when you're reaching out to your network, and you're expanding your network, we're not going to get there from sitting back treating this like a shoe store sales, where we wait for people to walk in and say, "You know, we'd like to set up shop in Moni." I, I understand your concern, and, and I, I'm not saying carte blanche on this, but I do think it's important to invest a little to grow along.
So, okay.
That's all I, that's fine, I'm glad we're having a discussion, it's good.
Yeah, we've had discussions about our, about our businesses in town.
Sure.
We're all good with that.
So, Mr. Wallace, do you need a motion, or this is professional services, it's, do you want a consensus at least, to see if the board's in favor of proceeding? Probably be a good way to deal with that.
I'll defer the attorney, but I'm thinking if the board wants to at least proceed, that maybe they approve an amount not to exceed, and let myself and trustee Pearson converse on this, and, you know, if, if this is, you know, something that, that we want to proceed on, then we already have that authorization to do that, and we've protected the amount of money.
And am I, am I correct in assuming that the funds could be, this could be subsidized from TIF funds, because it is for the development of those areas?
Mr. Mayor, before you...
Yes, please.
But also, cap you after that O.R. amendment, to that, to the motion that's getting ready to be created, that it also include commercial and industry as well in that study, because that's also important, because if we're talking about growing, if we're talking about bringing in retail, we also have to be able to employ people who would want to stay here, work here, pay their taxes here, shop here at the same time.
So are you, to, to allow the leverage of negotiating all those things, are you perhaps making a motion in the form of not to exceed, not to exceed $20,000 as an example?
Not to exceed $10,000.
Well, $10,000 is not going to get you all the extras we just talked about.
We don't know what that is regularly, because that, that wasn't part of the conversation.
I, I'm just saying, if you want him to have the leverage to move forward and not have to keep coming back, do you want to set a threshold of some dollar amount?
I can't move $1,000.
All right, I'm, I'm not telling you to, I'm just saying, what do you want? Because if you want to include more of that...
Actually, we need to find out if that would include it already, and then, and it's kind of hard to proceed with, you know, increasing the amount when you don't know specifically what all is in common.
So, Mr. Mayor, please.
It can, I could, simply, we know, we know the direction that we're taking with the $10,000. If the board is comfortable with not to exceed $13,000, it doesn't mean that we're going to spend that, it means that we will sit down, have that conversation. If it's already included on what we want to do, then the additional money becomes a moot point. But if it, if it does require a little additional, the board knows that that's the direction that we want to go, and if it isn't included in this, then we at least have a little bit of leeway that we don't have to wait on the timeframe, you know, to come back. But, you know, we certainly wouldn't spend that if it's not necessary.
So would somebody like to make a motion pertaining to...
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for $13,000.
Pertaining to market studies in general.
Marketing, including residential retail, commercial.
As much as you can get.
Right.
I'll second that.
Okay, so that's Pearson's word. Any further discussions? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustees Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisick?
Yes.
Gray?
No.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
And, and let me just, if I may, just for a second, thank you for everybody having your opinions and feeling comfortable sharing, that's important. So I'm, I'm grateful that we all feel comfortable with that, and it's, that's, that's good. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, under my report, I would like to report that Superintendent Gonzalez and myself met with the strained engineering as well as the construction company that saved routes to school. The majority of the trees have been removed along that route, there are a few more that need, that need to come down. Additionally, they have, I believe, if I'm wrong, wasn't that a 40-day project, 40 workdays? Also, they have a 40-workday project, it'll be very close to the start of school, may overrun into the start of school, but that doesn't mean that the sidewalk won't be in, maybe some restoration isn't completed or something like that by the time school starts. So based on that information, I do have a call in to the school district, Bob Bruce, and, and I will relay the information that they can expect that sidewalk to be operational at the beginning of school, weather permitting, of course, we can't control them on their nature, but things seem to be on track.
Good, good. And I'd like to thank trustee Gonzalez for, prior to being a trustee here, she was instrumental in securing her, so thank you.
We probably should get an award on the sarcastic side here, we should probably get an award for a sidewalk that's 18, five years to fruition, but, you know, that's the price we pay for grant, and, and we should be okay with that.
If you want something early for you, it's going to cost you.
There you go. The last item I would like to report on is I have that conversation with the new culvers that is under construction now, and they plan to do a, have a hiring day, an interview day on September the 7th, that's a Saturday. The location is yet to be determined. I only say that so people can start to watch for some information coming out. They will take applications, I believe that they're going to allow you to fill out applications online, and then up here on that day, you can fill out paper applications, and they go through the whole process on that very day, and actually make their hires on that day. And I believe that the store is programmed to open, weather permitting, around the 23rd of September. That concludes my report, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if I may, with sidewalk being implemented, that close to the school starting, are they projecting that this might cause any traffic issues, or we're going to need an officer out there during this time to make sure, make sure the kids don't walk on the street, they still have any restoration and work like that?
Yeah, based on our, on our information today, that we, we looked at schools starting around maybe the 23rd, you know, plus or minus from there, I'm really not sure on the start date.
20.
20? Okay, thank you. That they felt that they would really be in the final stages of any rain restoration, more raking, more seeding, things of that nature by that period. The construction phase being over should not provide any impediments to traffic at that light. But we will stay in touch with them, and should we need some assistance, I have Chief Sifar's number, so, so he's always obliging help, so I appreciate that.
Are you following through to be across the yard for a couple of days?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We're on the business side of the agenda. Under the mayor's agenda, a couple of things to bring up. I just want to reiterate, the sign ordinance is under review by planning and zoning, they've had it for a couple of meetings now. And I just want to clarify, if anybody has any modifications to the current ordinance that they'd like to see made, please identify the section of the current ordinance that you feel needs modification, and explain what and why you feel the justification to have a change. We've had a lot of concerns, a lot of comments, complaints even, about the sign ordinance, but we have yet to receive anything in writing from anybody that actually says, "Here's what I'd like to see changed." And that was our intent from the very beginning, two months ago almost, when we sent this to planning and zoning, was please submit your request for change in writing, so we can identify the section of code and what the contributing factors are for need for change in that. Not to say that all necessarily get implemented, but at this point, it's pretty easy to implement because there's no request to change. So as, as much as people don't like the current ordinances, as, as they've stated, I'd get to see that articulated in writing, which is all we're asking for, to submit in writing. Make it, you drop it off at the village hall, you know, we'll get to the planning and zoning chair, and then we'll make it available for the trustees to review as well.
Mayor, may I make a comment? Please. I was at the last couple of planning and zoning meetings, and this is probably one of the most difficult ordinances to come up with. You wouldn't believe unless you heard all the discussion, the confusion, the gray areas, it's, it's really quite complicated. Thank you.
The other thing is, next item is, I just want briefly to touch on this. I'd like to thank the board for allowing us to move forward with the Fall Festival. Effectively, we've got two months to plan a three-day event. We had some good exposure with the one-day event in one month, so now we're stretching it a little bit. We've already secured American English for Friday night and Infinity for Sunday night. So those are a couple of major names that are going to have a huge drop, they got a, they got a great social following already, so that'll, that'll bring a, a strong attendance for our vendors. And we're trying to find an incentive for our local vendors especially to have a, you know, feel comfortable being here, keep the low, cost of entry low for them. And so we're trying, still working through all that stuff, we don't have all the previous data and all that stuff, so we're relying on contacts with other municipalities, other vendors and things like that, and it's moving along quite well, and I'd like to thank Director Bautista for his hit at full swing, so, thank you. And at this point, this is the...
Thank you, Your Honor. Five ordinances for the board's review of consideration. The first ordinance is the ordinance creating position of the filling department manager. As we discussed at the last board meeting, I set forth the terms of the ordinance. The duties would be set forth in the job description, the term of the appointment, and the compensation would be also discussed on an annual basis. It's up for the board's review.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance. I need an ordinance order for that.
Maybe 1650.
I need a motion to approve it. Trustee Pearson?
Trustee Gonzalez?
Roll call, please.
Trustees Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisick?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. The second item is the ordinance creating position of the assistant village administrator. Basically the same terms as we just discussed, the difference is the assistant village administrator shall report to the village administrator. The compensation, the term of the appointment is set forth, and the compensation, once again, would be reviewed on an annual basis.
Okay.
1650.
Okay. Okay. Pearson, Raisick? Roll call, please.
Trustees Pop?
Yes.
Raisick?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Pearson?
Yes.
Thanks, Your Honor. The next item is an ordinance creating position of the finance clerk. Same preamble, the finance clerk, the position is hereby created. Duties would be set forth in job description, any amendments thereto. The finance clerk shall work under the direction of the finance director. Once again, the compensation would be established on an annual basis to our annual budget ordinance.
Hold on. Okay. Pearson, Raisick? Is the ordinance number 1650? That's great. Roll call, please.
Trustees Raisick?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
And Pop?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next ordinance is the ordinance creating position of the police executive assistant. Same preamble, once again, this job would be created, and this executive assistant would report to the police chief. The compensation would be established on an annual basis pursuant to our budget.
Okay. Ordinance number?
1652.
Hold on. Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustees Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
And Raisick?
Yes.
And the last ordinance, it is the position of the police clerk. The preamble's are the same as in the other ordinances. The police clerk would have all the duties set forth in job description, the police clerk would report under the direction of the police executive assistant. His or her salary would be again reviewed on an annual basis, and it would be set forth in annual budget.
So...
Gonzalez, Raisick? 1652. Roll call, please.
Trustees Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisick?
Yes.
And Gray?
Yes.
May I make a comment on what we just did there?
Sure.
Hopefully, uh...
What did you say? Trustee Gray?
I'm not lying here. So, while you straighten me out if I say something wrong, I want the people to understand that you just saw us pass a lot of positions. That means money. Some of the positions are just moves within our existing employees, which does not become a cost saving, not all. And the cost that we're going to incur with these is within the budget. That's all I want to say.
That's all we want to say.
Any other discussion? How'd you say that, Trustee Pearson?
Trustee Gonzalez did a good job on the tree ordinance. I don't know if the draft was given to you or not, but very long, very good. We'll have it in form for the board and then we'll send it to the zoning board before that.
They'll probably be going to need to send it to P and Z just for their final review to see if they have any other contributions they'd like to make to it. And then, once they've had a review of it, we will, um, have it prepared for all of us.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
He's too... Just got a question. Trustee Gonzalez, if, under the officials' reports, I just want to be sure, is that going to be a recommendation to move it to P and Z?
Yeah, and Mr. Grchaski and I already talked about that too very good.
But I just wanted to double check, thank you so much.
This leads us into the official's report. Would you like to carry on to the jury on the senior officers? Well, maybe certainly it's up to you.
Well, and it did, you know, it is in direct form now. I just, yeah, I'm just trying to say we're putting it in ordinance form. And it's our hope then, in the, the P and Z ordinance now, it's just a tree ordinance. It just gives a suggested list of parkway trees for new construction. It doesn't take into account any existing parkway trees or the population that we already have in the village. So this very extensive list, we're just hoping that P and Z adopts it so we can adapt it, or the lists will marry each other, that the same list will exist for both P and Z and the village.
Now, there's also, if I recall, and you'd also requested a, and this might be a separate item that will need to be put out, once we get that passed, some sort of a, is that going to include the tree plan, which will have a reimbursement thing, or is that actually separate from the ordinance?
It's a, a separate section.
I haven't seen that before.
Yeah, the separate section in the ordinance. So, yes, there's a list of trees and taking into account the, the kind of those of tree and, you know, the property agriculture in regards to utility lines, et cetera, et cetera. And then one line or one section is solely devoted to the tree replacement program.
So at least we have that program in place, which means that if there's a grant available, we're, are we going to be, I mean, you're already...
If there's a grant available and, you know, if we take into account, you know, our fall planting, you know, season, that we need to talk about as a board, then how we can proceed to make sure we take advantage of that fall planting season?
I guess what I'm asking is, is this going to, then put us in the right place to be a participant in the programs? Because we already have that established definition.
And the, the two grants that I was aware of, specifically for this, would put us in the running because we had to have a plan first before we could submit.
A replacement, we needed to be part of the ordinance.
An, an ordinance we would begin with and a plan, so that's a good...
Which obviously excluded the actual trees. Yes.
But anyway.
Okay, great. So, do we need a motion or just an agreement going to P and Z?
We don't need anything until, you know...
It's just going to P and Z. So it's informational, it's going to be, so if you got your favorite tree, it's not on the list, talk to Dave Olston at P and Z.
Oh, he can just, you know...
Too bad.
The complaint is on the third floor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Trustee Pop, please.
Let me only say that the administration is shorthanded. And they have, we have a very aggressive board and mayor trying to get a lot done. Really, they have a lot on their plate. I still do not have enough information. I don't know enough about it, I rely on others, and they are very busy. So I am not ready to proceed with anything further on the water or the capital projects at this time. But it will happen eventually.
Okay.
And it won't take like the sidewalk, five years.
Go, please. All right. Uh, Trustee Gray?
I'm currently getting close to finding some basketball hoops. For people that are not aware, I brought up the last meeting about trying to regenerate, getting a basketball court back here on Court Street. And we spoke about, instead of doing it on Court Street, going over to the church parking lot and getting maybe two or three sets, which basically six basketball courts, so that the kids have something to do. A lot of people in town say that our kids have nothing to do, either basketball or skateboarding, skate park. We'd like to see that, but for now, the temporary basketball courts is something we're looking into. At this point, I'm still trying to get prices, best generate, what is the best route to go? And then I do have to speak with the people at the owner churches. I have not gotten their phone number, to at least, or at least two or three sets up, so the kids have something to do and hopefully stay out of trouble. And the chief will monitor, because the complaint was, you know, later at night, they're out there causing problems, but the chief will stay on his job and make sure that it doesn't happen.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I... Trustee Gray, the chief has a life of science. I just think that, you know, just make sure that in your investigation, not just the cost of the equipment really, which is great, to pursue that and get the information so we can move forward possibly with that. By all means, you know, Director Bautista has had very good relations with Pastor Hunt. And I know he's actually had conversations with him regarding that concept. But also, sidebar at some point, talk to the chief to, to find out if there's concerns about perhaps potential problem for enforcement of issues, if it's not on public property, it's a minor concern. So, I mean, if we can enforce things to an extent, it doesn't mean we have the manpower necessary.
No, I'm not saying manpower, just, just like that Court Street.
Yep.
Falls at dusk, boom, everybody's done. You know, there's no lights over in the church parking lot as there is one here.
They do have lights over there, I'm not sure at the time. Yeah, the other thing is going to be, do you want to set up preference? Court time limitations, you have to almost start thinking about policies and all that because otherwise you're going to have people from out of town that may come in, and then our locals may not have the opportunity to use our own courts. Just, I mean, you also have to think in those terms, so not just the cost of equipment, but just think about the planning.
No, exactly. That was the little night that I had last year after the autumn.
That's what.
It's good. It's good. It's a good, you need something to do.
Maybe they'll go shopping in one of our stores when we have one, too. Thank you, Trustee Gonzalez. Do you have any other officials having room? Any other things you'd like to... Trustee Horn?
So just a reminder that Saturday night, we have a classic movie in the park. We have The Adventures of Ramon Hood, which is starring Errol Flynn. It's in glorious technicolor, and that will start at dusk. And there will be refreshments available for purchase. And I'd also like to thank the Department of Public Works for their signs. Hopefully you've seen signs around town advertising. This, yeah, and they did a really nice job. That was, that was our director who did that, or who took the lead on that. So, thank you.
Any other trustees?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, this is, also to the public, if we could, you know, check out the village website. There's been some updates on there as well, even especially about the new, the two new positions that were created out of the five that are in here that are actually up on the website. So again, we're advertising, we want the best people to actually apply for this information. So please, you know, check out the website, the information is out there. And, you know, let's grow this village, you know, to, you know, the more man...
Speaking of the website, if I may, just a moment. I know the administrative met with one web developer, the T and D meet with another later this week. And hopefully we can work on that. Okay, nothing else for the officials? Open to the public, non-agenda items? Please leave your comments to three minutes. Come to the podium, give your name, address, and try to be nice.
Always nice. Sheila Bartlett, two five six one seven Naffedale Lane in Moni. Jennifer Gasparo, two five seven oh nine South Taff Street in Moni. Faraway. Yes. The, um... You don't want me saying... Just making sure that everybody received in their packet the information in regards to the Second Annual Pre-Moni District Tool and Youth Education Foundation?
Can you shorten that a little more?
A golf outing. A golf outing. It's going to be held August seventeenth, which is a Saturday, at the Lincoln Oaks Golf Course in Crete. Registration is at eight. We're taking off at nine. And I'm proud to say I've been a part of this for both years and into effect. We were able, last year with this as well as our gala, to present seven scholarships to Cremoni education, the children. Seven thousand dollars? Yes, seven thousand dollars. So, and this year, which is kind of dear to my heart, we are adding an additional two for the two students that were killed at Cremoni, for Kelsey and Patrick. So we're hoping that we can get all of you to come golf with us. We're looking forward to it. And also, we actually have a sponsor form, and we're hoping that we can get the village to actually sponsor a hole, if not one, maybe more. I don't know if you've all received that as well. I just want to make sure, does anyone have any questions about it?
What's the cost of the sponsorship?
It is a hundred dollars for the first hole. If you decide to go with three holes... Three holes, it's two fifty. Or three holes with, including a foursome, would be five hundred. And it would be advertised in all of our materials on our website. Obviously, per hole sponsorship, there would be, in fact, they're saying Village of Moni sponsored that hole. And all of our, all of our advertising materials would have to remain on.
Closing on the agenda, just going to get a consensus of the board members to get a feel for who are interested in. I know we've sponsored scholarship things in the past. I just, can I get a consensus, is that okay to do? Are you guys inclined to, I don't golf, so you don't have to worry about that. I'm more inclined to go with the chief.
You can ride the cart, Jay.
Obviously, you golf, is it, Mr. Sittar?
No.
Line up, roll out, and cheer them for you, bud. All right, so can I get a consensus for the, for the board? Trustee Horn? Are you in favor?
Yeah, I was in favor. I was going to say that we could do the three holes for, sponsor the three holes for two fifty. I'm in favor of that.
Trustee Gonzalez? Of course, I know you're in.
I'll just do myself.
Trustee Gray? Yes. Trustee... Yes, Raisik?
Thank you, thank you very much.
And of course, let's open to the public, correct?
Yes, and please, join us. Yes. Both Americans.
If I may direct the deputy clerk, when she's on duty tomorrow, to go to the... Hi. Turn around, say trustee, before I say your name.
Denise Cranser, two five seven thirty-six Hoover Street. You know, I'm always here just to cause a little trouble, but that's okay. Just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Was a new budget passed when this new board was seated?
No.
Oh, then my question, my real question is, where are all these positions that have been created? Where are they being paid out? Because they weren't on the budget, they were paid.
Yes, I can answer that. If you recall, when the budget was passed, our expenditures exceeded our income, as has been the practice for the, for the last couple of years. So the authorization to spend that money is there. The individual line items did not appear on that budget. You can create a line item. We cannot increase the amount of the appropriation. Any of the new positions that have been added will not go over the amount of the total appropriation for expenditures. If that has to happen, it has to come back to this board and we have to go through a public hearing and do an additional appropriation to that. That will not happen based on the amount of expenditures that were approved under this current budget.
So these positions and the ones that have been recently created and on the website, they're all going to be followed within the budget and we're not going to go back and ask for more money?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. See, that was fairly nice.
Thank you. How do you expect anything else, please? Anybody else? Okay, at this time, I believe we have a couple of items to go into executive session regarding pertaining to cross burying, litigation personnel. I'm intending a motion to go into executive session. Time is now seven thirty. Come on. Thank you. Should you raise it? Trustee Pearson, you're raising it?
Trustee's Pearson?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez? And Horn?
Yes.